Okay, I think we will get started. Thank you all very much for coming this evening and we are beginning with the AAPAC report. And welcome. If you all would like to introduce yourselves, then I think we will get started. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Maloney. I'm the coordinator for Advanced Academic Programs.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Rodriguez. I had the pleasure of chairing the committee this year.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Weinbergs. I'm the dean of students at West Potomac High School and I am the co-chair of the committee.
Ready to start?
Again, my name is Elizabeth Rodriguez. I had the pleasure of chairing the committee this year along with my co-chair, Sarah. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve in this function. It was an opportunity as a member of the community and as a parent of three children in Fairfax County Schools to get a glimpse behind the scenes of the great work that the district is doing and also get a deeper understanding of some of our challenges. So, thank you. And with that, we'll get started. As you know, our charge this year was to focus on the Young Scholars Model. And to start, I'll just review our exact charge. The FCPS Young Scholars Model is one FCPS strategy within the access-to-rigor driver of the Closing the Achievement Gap framework. The Young Scholars Model is comprised of four interdependent components: committed professionals, find/identify, nurture/guide/support, and essential elements. AAPAC will study and review best practices for ensuring equitable access to advanced opportunities in order to make your recommendations for strengthening the impact of the K-12 Young Scholars Model. Now, our approach to reviewing the program as it's currently implemented and formulating recommendations to strengthen it, we began with sort of a broad overview and exploration of the issue of excellence and equity gaps as they exist nationwide. It's not a problem unique to Fairfax County, as you know. So, we did sort of a review of a large body of research, research articles, really study just sort of the whys, the hows, the best practices, you know, that are being implemented in various places. We followed that by narrowing down a review of the Young Scholars Model as it's implemented here in Fairfax County. We took a look at how it's grown over the past almost two decades and the role that it's had in increasing students identified and participating in advanced academic programs. We also enjoyed a panel of school leaders came to our meeting in February, I believe. Fantastic panel comprised of principals, ARTs, teachers from elementary, middle, and high schools to talk to us about how Young Scholars is implemented in their schools, what's working for them, how they're seeing success. And we found that extremely useful. So, as you know, the Young Scholars Model is an exemplary model. It's nationally recognized. It's being duplicated in other districts around the country. That said, we're always looking for ways to identify more students and improve. And so, our committee has developed five recommendations to strengthen the model. And with that, I'll go over to Sarah.
With that, I'll take recommendation one. So, the recommendations that we put together, we were aiming for things that were budget-neutral or low-cost and high-impact. That being said, this recommendation is not budget-neutral. However, we decided to carry this recommendation over from last year's report because of the depth of impact. We recognize that it's difficult to find the funding for a full-time AART in every elementary school. But the 90 elementary schools that are funding a full-time AART are finding good success. They're finding that to be a very good way to spend their money, but it's a very difficult budget decision to make. So, the primary reason we decided to include this recommendation was because it increases the equity of access to AAP services for all elementary students, even those where the Title I money needs to be spent on Title I services. We also thought about the middle schools. And what we found when we were talking to the panel is that in the middle schools, there's a very patchy fidelity of implementation of the Young Scholars Model. In fact, in a number of middle schools, there is no Young Scholars support. So, the proposal would be to have a half-time AART teacher in each middle school with the intent of supporting first the Young Scholars and having a primary point person for that and then to support the rest of the AAP program in the middle schools.
Recommendation two.
Recommendation two is to increase administrator and teacher awareness of the Young Scholars Model related to equity in FCPS. One of the strengths of the Young Scholars Model is that by design, it is very broad and flexible so that schools can tailor it to their specific needs. But because it's so broad and flexible, it also presents maybe a challenge because there's not one way to do it. So, there's not, maybe that causes some uncertainty. To that end, we recommend that administrators and teachers might use the Young Scholars Model Implementation Rubric. That's one of the indices attached on the, which is meant to be used as a tool to help schools self-reflag, kind of figure out where they are and set goals to implement the Young Scholars Model in their schools and track improvement. So, the rubric was piloted in several schools this past school year and it did see some success in just increased awareness and conversations, which leads to increased student opportunities. Another suggestion for raising awareness would might be to include the Young Scholars Model information in job-embedded professional development, perhaps a part of required e-learning modules or included in school planning days. Again, there's just an uneven awareness across the county, and so, we think this would be useful. Another simple, I say it's simple, I don't know if it's simple. It's simple in theory. But another suggestion is that we could increase teacher awareness of Young Scholars by adding an icon or alert in SIS that's similar to ESOL or IEP. From what I understand, and Sarah has spoken to this firsthand experience, that it's there. The Young Scholars designation is in SIS currently, but it's very difficult to find. Even if you are looking for it, there apparently are several layers of digging to get to. So, if that could become a more prominent, easy-to-find icon, then teachers would be more easily able to see who, which of their students are Young Scholars.
That in particular becomes more important at the high school and middle school level where you're dealing with 150 students. It literally took me three minutes to find the Young Scholar designation for a student I knew was a Young Scholar. And I can't do that for 150 kids. So, having that icon and just having that awareness becomes an immediate alert to teachers that that student has been identified. Under recommendation three, recommendation three is really around curriculum and it is fully budget-neutral. The curriculum frameworks and the PD already exist. They're there. There are schools who are using this and who are finding great success with all students, but particularly at that K-2 level where those connections for the critical and creative thinking are really being developed. The schools who are implementing scaffolded AAP curriculum are finding that it's really benefiting all students, but it's also making it easier to identify those students who are Young Scholars and those students who should be in the AAP programs. So, budget-neutral. All we have to do is say, "Do it," and be able to provide the examples that schools are doing it, doing it successfully. And those schools, some of those schools were the ones on our panel and they, I know they would be more than happy to go to other elementary schools and share their successes.
Recommendation four is connect Young Scholars to other beneficial programs in middle school and high school. This recommendation really is just about connecting the dots, connecting Young Scholars to other programs that already exist, programs like AVID and CPP who targeted demographics overlap with the demographics that we're targeting with Young Scholars. And recommendation one requested funding for middle school ARTs. Realizing that that might not be feasible, we do recommend that schools consider designating, if not an ART, a Young Scholars lead of some sort. And that could be someone that's already there, such as the Equity Lead and AVID Lead. And in the high schools as well, Equity Lead or APIB Coordinator, someone who is there to sort of coordinate the Young Scholars and connect them to other beneficial programs.
One thing I would add to recommendation four is considering clustering Young Scholars. A number of high schools are using the advisory model and some are moving to the advisory model. Those who have used the advisory model with Young Scholars have found it extremely beneficial to cluster the cohorts of Young Scholars as they come in because they're providing mentorship, they're providing a lot of that socio-emotional support that Young Scholars, who are very often from underrepresented populations, need to feel successful and to feel included in classrooms where they might be the only child of color. Our recommendation five goes to some of the same type of information. This would be around language and access. The language piece is more about parents and more about educating parents. One of the things that those of us who've worked with Young Scholars have found is that a lot of parents, especially at the secondary level, are unaware of what the Young Scholars Program is. And if they are parents who are not native English speakers, they're very, very hesitant and very unsure about putting their, letting their child participate in this program. I've actually had parents call and say, "Take my child out of this. I do not want my child to participate," because they have some perception that this is a bad thing. So, to address some of those misconceptions and some of that lack of education, we would like to see letters, standard letters for identification in all translated languages, have those available to every level, not just elementary schools. Elementary schools already have those. The middle schools and high schools do not have those letters pre-translated. They really have to come up with anything that they're sending out on their own. And that's a bit cumbersome if you're not a native speaker of 10 different languages that you're sending this out to. The other aspect of the language piece is using parent liaisons and increasing parent education. We would recommend that the elementary schools use their parent liaisons, who are so often an integral part of their community already, to sponsor workshops, to invite parents to workshops, to educate them on AAP programs, AAP models, the Young Scholars Model, and really the process of how advanced academics works in the United States school system and in FCPS in particular. At the middle, at the middle school and high school level, some of those letters would need to be created and then translated. And the parent liaisons would be very, very key in outreach to parents who are non-native speakers when their child is invited to participate in Young Scholars programs and particularly if their child is identified as a Young Scholar at middle or high school level. It doesn't happen as much as we would like, but it's something that we believe all the education pieces for the administrators and for teachers would achieve. But then we need the education piece for the parents, and many of the parents are non-native speakers. So, having things in their home language would make it much more accessible to them. That's the end of our recommendations.
Okay. Thank you very much. So far, I have Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. Corbett Sanders, and I'm sure there will be others. Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Thank you all for your good, hard work on this. I really appreciate it. Excuse me. I had the pleasure of being the school board liaison to your committee this year and I was able to attend several of your meetings. And I just want to tell my colleagues, this has been a dedicated, hard-working group. I think you can see that by their recommendations. But also, I think there was one day, it was called off, a snow day. And I was kind of, I kind of didn't look at the news that morning. I was on my way. And I thought, "Well, you know, I'll get there." And every single person was there. They were all there. They had a panel report that day. Every person on the panel was there. The audience was full of committee members who were there to interact with the panel to learn about it. So, I just want to say thank you for your hard work. When you look at what we're trying to do overall as a system is ensuring equity and opportunity for underserved groups, I think these recommendations are spot-on for what we need. We talk about, you know, the Young Scholars Model is to promote those, the rigors of advanced academics to those students who may not be identified for whatever reason. And I think even though they're the first two, and you've recommended, like you said, this for two years now, maybe even more, maybe, I seem to have, I sat on this committee with Ms. Corbett Sanders many, many years ago, and I think this might have been a recommendation even way back then. That's how Ms. Corbett Sanders and I know each other from a very long time ago. Yes. So, Dr. Braybrand, and I hope you do take into account the possibility of staffing that. There is a clear lack of equity. I remember that very, you know, I remember that very clearly when my children were younger and people were saying, "This school right here gets advanced academic programming this much." You know, the pull-out programs, things like that, because the resource teacher visited that school more times than it visited another school. And we, I couldn't quite figure that out, you know, for quite a while, how and why that happened. But if we are talking about true equity and making certain we have this opportunity for children who statistically go unidentified, I think this is a great way to do it, even if we can't, you know, do both the middle and the elementary school, I think, starting at the elementary school, because that's what, we need that there to ensure that these children who are capable of advanced learning opportunities get that and that there is equity to access. That's extremely, extremely important. So, I am absolutely, even though it does have a cost differential, I would ask for a next step to have that be costed out for us, what the cost would be to, I'll start just right now with the full-time art in the elementary schools. I would like that costed out. It seems like it's an easy thing, and I guess so that would be another. To any staff who's here, you're saying they're identified, but so, how did you figure out? It took you three minutes to find one kid. So, how did you figure that out?
So, in my previous role before I became the dean of students, I taught chemistry and I was also the Advanced Academics Coordinator. As the Advanced Academics Coordinator, I also was the SAG grant manager, the Student Achievement Grant. And the SAG grant is targeted to Young Scholars. So, I already knew who the Young Scholars were in my building. I had lists of those. And so, knowing that it was in the CIST system, I wanted to see how easy it was to find. It took me three minutes, at least three minutes, for a student that I knew to go in and to find it. And it was from the, I have two levels of CIST access. I have the teacher level and I have administrator level. And from the teacher level, it's even harder to find. It's even more hit. From the administrator level, it's a little bit easier. It takes two, three clicks and scrolling to the bottom of the screen to find it on the administrator level. To find it on the student level, five clicks, four, five clicks to get there, and you have to know where it is.
You have to know.
You have to know. So, me knowing, I had a hard time finding it. Which I could not realistically ask my 250 or so teachers to do that for 150 students each.
Right. So, Dr. Braybrand, do we think that's something that we could look into?
Yes. I'd say yes.
Thank you.
We should be able to, we should be able to address that. I don't have the answer tonight. And honestly, I don't know. It's Thursday night, right?
Yes, it is, sir.
How long, we've had Young Scholars, 10 years?
It's almost two decades.
20 years.
It's going on 20 years, yeah.
Somehow, I don't know how, but the communication about this, maybe it already bubbled up earlier, but it's bubbling up now and we'll figure out a way. It shouldn't be that difficult. We do want teachers to know who these kids are, just like we do at the beginning of the year. Teachers have to have the IEP information for students to begin the school year. So, we can figure out a way to do it, whether it's through the wonders of technology or old-fashioned. Here's a list. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume the other one, I mean, it is one of those things that, again, it's not done with fidelity, because, and I say that only because it's not done at every school, the scaffolded learning, learning opportunities for K-2, because that's when you would see if that, if that child had that potential. And I know from schools, some schools, what they do once, and this is beyond the K through 2 area, but I've seen such success at AAP centers where they take the curriculum and particularly, not all the projects, but some of the projects are then allowed for the entire school. And that's done, that's been done with such success. And so, if we could do that at the K through, at the K through 2 level where we're still in the identifying stages early on, but I imagine that's a bit more complex. But, you know, I would, I would also just like to propose that as well, you know, as a next step, just look at how that may be. Or at least, again, did you, well, I guess this is the question. So, how do we start that? Because did you identify, are there certain schools that do that currently? And you have listings of those or?
We know, yes. The ARTs, the Advanced Academic Resource Teachers, turn in a school agreement form at the beginning of every year and lays out what's their plan for the year, which grade levels are they going to work on. Depending on how much they're at the school, that opens them up to be able to work more or less with primary. So, it is very different from school to school. One thing that local Level 4 has offered us a lot of opportunity with is as more students are served in local Level 4 programs, that does free the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher to work more with primary, to do the talent development and model more of that curriculum. I think an important thing about the resource teacher position is that it, you know, in the past, it really was doing a lot of pull-out and even a lot of, there's a few people who still call them the itinerant, but they really are coaches and they are really working, getting into the classrooms and working to build the capacity of teachers to be using those strategies and use that curriculum with their support and then hopefully a gradual release of that over time.
Right. So, what would you be, how would you suggest then, Kirsten, would be the best way to look at this holistically and see where we need to improve this? Do you have a suggestion or?
I think that we, you know, if we have the recommendation here, that we are going, you know, that this is something that everybody thinks is really important, that's a strong message to be able to share with school leaders who might still be thinking about it as a pull-out program and to be able to have the ARTs think about that when they meet with their administrators in September or even earlier, to talk about what will be the priorities in their school and where will they spend their time and how can we build those partnerships in the K through 2 years so that that's happening more.
Right. And it seems like this step would be a lot easier if you had the full-time, that would be a no-brainer, then that would be part of their work and part of their job. So, well, you know, I'll be interested to hear what my colleagues think, but, you know, as again, I put on a next step to see the costs, cost that out. And, you know, I think this is definitely something I would support as well. So, thank you all again for your time. And again, I really enjoyed seeing your energy and being part of your group.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much for dedicating your time to this very important committee. It's one that, as Ms. Darnak Kofax mentioned, it's one that I've spent a lot of time with over the years. And I do very much remember recommendation one being put in at least for the past six years. And so, the, and we even at some point said, "Well, if you can't do it all, make sure all of our Title I schools have a full-time AART." And we still haven't succeeded in doing that yet, which I would hope that this, when we talk about equity, that we really talk about the importance of this role. Because we, to a certain extent, have created a vicious circle. If we understaff it, then we don't have the fidelity of implementation within buildings and then we don't have the early identification of underrepresented groups because the AART is only in the building for a certain amount of time and then moves off. And the role of the AART has changed, as you put it, from an itinerant teacher, a resource teacher, to more of a coach. And so, with that background, I think we really need to come back to what we're trying to achieve here, which is the Young Scholars Program, which, when it was originally envisioned, was a way of reaching into communities that had been underrepresented. And I was glad to see the numbers that are in your report. It does show significant increases in that representation, but it's still not where it needs to be. And so, if I can go through your recommendations and make some comments, one, I do fully support having a full-time AART at a minimum in every one of our Title I schools. It seems to me that that is an equity issue and it is something that when we talk about fidelity of implementation in infusing into those schools, the, what ends up being part of your recommendation three of those skills in the teachers to have that scaffolding and have the insight for early identification, I think that's important. I mean, several years ago, under Marty Smith's leadership, his whole region was, everybody got trained in AAP pedagogy so that the teachers were able to infuse it in all of the classrooms in a given region. And so, I look at this as being, if we are truly committed to Young Scholars, then we need to make sure that that pedagogy is in all of our schools and that we have the training and the best way of doing that is making sure we have that full-time AART. I also think the identifier is really important. Several years ago, and Ms. Weinberg, I think you probably remember the work that was done at West Potomac where they actually tracked a number of students who were Young Scholars and they were able to look at the longitudinal growth for these kids over time. But it was really just a snapshot because it was one pyramid and one group of, you know, a few groups of kids. So, I think it would be helpful for us to be much more focused in doing some of that growth modeling and go beyond just a single pyramid to see where the Young Scholars Programs are working well. And one of the things that was done when they were looking at the West Potomac kids, it leads me to the next question. to see where the Young Scholars Programs are working well. And one of the things that was done when they were looking at the West Potomac kids, it leads me to the next question, which is, you know, Young Scholars was, was originally envisioned as a, as an entry ramp to AAP for underrepresented groups. I'm a little concerned, um, that if we focus purely on a Young Scholars model, that we all, we have to make sure that part of that model and part of the metrics for the success of that model is how many of these kids who come into our system and are identified as Young Scholars are then provided the supports to scaffold into our Level Four programs, either local Level Four and our center programs. And then once they get into middle school, having metrics that say, how many honors classes are they taking in middle school? And how many honors and AP or IB classes they're taking in high school? And so when we, when we look at the program, it's got to be more than just the four piece parts. But really having, um, metrics that say, and this is how we measure the success. And if anybody wants to comment on that before I go to the next?
Referringing West Potomac, uh, my first year as Advanced Academics Coordinator with my first ninth grade, uh, Young Scholars cohort, I spent many, many hours going through and looking at each student's academic history. And it was, it was extremely disheartening to see these students who had gone through elementary school with top marks, go to middle school and not take a single honors class, not be advanced in math.
Right.
And so when they got to me at West Potomac, they weren't ready to take honors biology, which meant they couldn't take honors chemistry because they weren't far enough where they needed to be in the math. And that closed so many doors. It closed so many opportunities to those students in the maths and sciences, many of whom I encountered the following year in my chemistry classes, very, very, very capable. But because they had not been pushed in math, I didn't see them in my honors chemistry courses. They couldn't take AP chemistry because they weren't ready for it. It hurt, honestly.
That's precisely the concern is it's, we can either have children live up to expectations or live down to expectations. And the beauty of what the Young Scholars Model was supposed to be was to help those students understand to, that they could live up to the rigor of advanced academics. And that's one of the
In elementary.
And they did in elementary, but it's that middle school piece and encouraging kids to do the honors in middle school and not say, oh, well, you know, i- it's only for special kids.
Uh, Dr. Spersidio would like to.
But they are special.
Yeah, it, I, I apologize. I know this is a school board advisory committee report, but I think a little bit of data that's germane to the question that Ms., uh, Corbett Sanders is asking. I was looking at some data here on the Young Scholars Model, which, which we really believe is an excellent program. Um, and we appreciate the, uh, advisory committee's advocacy to expand the program and resources and supports for the program. But I was looking at some of the recent data that we had reviewed in, uh, the Instructional Services Department. And we have seen a 230% increase since 2012 in terms of the number of Young Scholars participating in advanced coursework at the secondary level. And 84% last year of our Young Scholars, students at the secondary level, were taking either honors, AP or IB courses. And 77% of those students were receiving As or Bs in those courses, which is a testament not just to the elementary teachers that worked with those students, but also to the folks that are supporting those students at the secondary level when they matriculate up to, uh, high school. So, thank you for letting me provide a little bit of context for, for that. Appreciate it.
And Dr. Presidio, I appreciate that because I did see those numbers in the report. Um, and as I mentioned in my remarks, I appreciate that we've grown that much, but we should continuously stretch for even more because when it's growing by 284%, but you're starting at a smaller number, then it's still not where we need to be. I think if you look at the numbers compared to the total population, then, you know, we still have room to grow.
Well, we always have room for improvement. There's no question. So.
And so that was, no, I, I appreciate that. And thank you. But I would encourage, um, that we, we need to have either built into our counseling, um, and into our, you know, discussions with parents and teachers at the high, elementary school, that as your children move up through the system, that they should be encouraged to take advantage of that. And so the vertical articulation, that's kind of what I was talking about. And I do like your idea of the cohorts. But I want to make sure that those cohorts are co-mingled with other students that are, um, taking advantage of advanced academics and are not standalone cohorts on their own. And I also think that your idea of translating materials into multiple languages is a brilliant idea. But I would like to have more of a roadmap, uh, as, as you're going forward and thinking about how we, um, have these Young Scholar tracks, it's not tracks, but the Young Scholar Cohorts having entry ramps into the advanced academic curriculum.
Ms. Polczek?
Uh, yes. Thank you so much for your work and for your report on this and for analyzing both the data and, and sharing your, uh, experiences. Uh, as a student who I still remember pullout, uh, GT, we called it back then, I believe in fifth grade, I started Frank Lloyd Wright, the stock market and multiple intelligences. Um, I wish I remembered my AART teacher's name, but, uh, invaluable, the only time I remember every single thing we studied. So, um, I know the model has changed, um, but I, I do think it's really important, especially for kids who can access, and most of them can, this curriculum and the project-based learning, um, to get to the next level and to be encouraged to do the honor. So thank you for sharing that. Um, I have, uh, a few questions and comments and I think kind of pulling on the same thread. And I, and I really appreciate that this was the focus of the, the AIPAC work this year. You know, ideally, uh, yes, I would love, uh, if we can get to the point where we can support that position in every school. I guess, and I apologize if I don't know this, um, for local level four, does every school with the local level four currently have a full-time AART?
No, it's, we have, um, 13 schools who are staffed at full-time. That's been for about the past five years, um, in some of our high, highest FRM schools. Um, and then we have 78 principals who either use Title One funds or trade to be able to have full-time. Some of them are at local level four and some of them are not.
Okay. So, meaning that currently in almost 100 schools, we have full-time, just not
91.
91. Okay. So 91 schools have the position, but only 13 of those are funded, um, centrally.
Uh huh.
Okay. Um, that's good to know. And so the local level four, if they have it full-time, generally it's because they are funding it with their own, okay, funding. Um, I know we were looking at that at some of my schools. Uh, so that would be, you know, I think it's really important for us and for Dr. Duran and, and Dr. Presidio to help us figure out the plan to move forward, um, ideally if we can fund the AART, um, at the elementary level. I also am very, very interested and concerned, and I know there are best models out there. At the last conference, I heard from a few of how to get those students into the middle school, right, honors courses. And, and I, and from what I heard, the best practice is you really have to have, you know, that hands-on mentorship contracts, really helping those kids one-on-one as that support, um, getting into those programs and having the support. So I guess I would love to know sort of how we move forward. And it sounds like you're really saying we need a model, whether it's, you know, the pyramid decides how they're going to align, how they're going to support their kids, whether they're going to do clustering or they're going to do some kind of programming, and how we support them centrally. So it seems like we have some models that maybe work internally, um, but generally they're being done kind of by amazing individual staff members.
So I'll say a part of our work with the Closing the Achievement Gap Framework, um, our work as an office for the past two years has been to work with a pyramid vertically, so that there would be that articulation, building, um, the understanding together as pyramid principals and then making sure that we're not just bringing those school leaders, but also counselors together. Um, we also have been doing a lot this year to partner with a count, the school counseling office, um, to try to coordinate our resources, knowing that we're giving very similar messages. But if we can coordinate them a little bit more and package our support to schools in a way that is more streamlined. Um, so we're working on some resources to, to better support that as well.
Good. So, yeah, in that vein, I guess, um, I'm, I'm leaning toward both for that and for the language side. Uh, I know how hard it is to have to translate many documents and that even PTAs would love that support. So I don't know at what level right now centrally, we're creating kind of those standardized forms that are very easy for a school to just adapt and send out in every language, fill in the blanks kind of things. Or, um, you know, if, if, if there's room for improvement, uh, Dr. Presidio, in how we standardize, um, you know, not everything, but the resources we're providing so that the communication and the support, uh, for students getting into those programs is really happening.
We have those letters very strong at the elementary level and totally an area for growth is at the secondary level as they're going up. Um, and then again, just having someone to own that, eh, at the secondary level, um, to be that lead in each school would be really helpful. Um, we do send home communications that have to do with the summer school program that those middle and high school students are invited to. But the, but that's just a piece of it. It really has to be the whole school year too. So to have someone who would be able to help with that communication at that level, whether it's linking into the equity lead or, um, having someone like an AART at the middle school level, that would, that would help support getting the word out and all of the communications that would need to happen.
Um, and, and my final follow-up question that you remind me, reminded me of is I've had a, a few parents of, uh, Young Scholar students actually ask if there are upper, similar opportunities at the middle school level. Um, so far I don't know of any, uh, that are, you know, affordable as, um, for our parents. So I don't know if that's an area where you have thoughts or suggestions or ideas of how to continue that support, uh, for the summer programs.
So there are, again, it's another budget issue. We have, if it's the same issue at the elementary level too, is that we have more Young Scholars schools than we have money to hold programs. So, um, the, we work with the summer school office and they provide, we figure out the list of the, the schools that would need that support. But middle school is included in that and we do offer, um, middle school programs, but just not at every school.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. McGlock?
Good evening. Like my colleagues have said, I very much appreciate the substantive recommendations you've all made. Um, in the interest of time, I won't necessarily repeat all the great recommendations that, uh, they've all echoed. Um, but what, two things I really want to hone in on, one is, um, and we're all guilty of saying AART. We need to make sure people are watching this. So for the AAP resource teacher, you know, I, I absolutely think that, um, with, you know, budgeting discussions with staff, the optimal would be that we'd have them in each of the schools. Uh, even from my own family's experience, um, our school is small, um, in population. So there wasn't an advanced resource teacher. As a result, my two older sons who were Level Three didn't get any services at all, none. And they both ended up doing great, um, and going on to wonderful universities. But it was frustrating for me as a parent that there wasn't an equity about, you know, depending on which elementary school you're at and the size of the elementary school and the staffing, you get that or you don't. And there's no point in being identified Level Three School-Based AAP if you're not going to get anything from it. Um, I was also aware as a PTA president that other schools in the early 2000s, the way they got around it is if you're wealthy enough, you financed it. And even though there are ways that you say, well, you know, you can't finance a position, well, the PTAs subsidize the principal to pay for other things. So then that money freed it up and they paid for a staff position. So when we talk about equity, um, among 150 elementary schools, right then and there, we have an equity problem. Um, for the middle school, I think, again, looking at staffing, it's an ideal perhaps. But what's different about middle school is that we offer honors curriculum. So at the elementary school, we don't have standard curriculum and honors curriculum for enrichment, but it is something we offer at the middle school. And so, you know, looking at that model for middle school, again, it would be great. But part of why we have honors courses and at both middle and high school is because now we're trying to do some differentiated instruction. So priority-wise, Dr. Brayburn, I would say that, um, Dr. Brayburn, that we would want to focus on staffing at the elementary first, I think. To accessing these honors courses, so glad some of my colleagues, um, were, were talking about this and, um, the, um, teacher perspective in the room. Um, we were just talking about this today at one of my high schools where I was at their advise, their semi-annual advisory committee, a review. And, uh, I shared with them what I'm hearing from parents that our middle school to high school transitions are worried about student stress. So they're saying to families, don't take honors courses unless your child is passionate about the subject. Well, if you happen to be in a family like mine, where my husband and I have graduate degrees and we've seen our kids thrive in an all honors curriculum at the middle school level, we discounted that statement and said, do you like learning? Do you like being challenged? And if that's, you're willing to do the work, then you don't have to love all four core subjects. It's just whether you not, you want to be challenged in the, in the learning environment. But not every child's going to have parents who in this case is a former college admissions officer or a father who's, you know, also got a comfort level to say, we've watched our kids, we know what they can access. So I think that, Dr. Brayburn, again, we need to be looking at, how do we help our guidance counselors be comfortable in engaging in that conversation with the students and the parents at saying, look, we do want balance, but you're going to end up finding again, that we're going to see disparities in who's taking these classes based on the, the parents who are going to think independently and feel comfortable enough to almost perhaps say, well, that doesn't sound right to me and I'm going to encourage my kids. And, you know, I, I just really, it saddens me when I think some kids get pulled off the honors track that they were doing so well in the middle school. Or even if they were doing accelerated learning at the elementary and we miss them. And so, you know, I, I really so appreciate hearing your teacher experience in that because I, I, I'm hearing it and seeing it even at some of our really high performing middle and high schools. So we got to do but, better by all kids. And, um, we just talked about this last night. Rigor doesn't translate volume of work. And that's a key piece of then causing staff to say, well, don't register for all honors. Well, if you have the aptitude, do it. It's not, it doesn't have to be about how many hours of homework you have because that shouldn't change. So that's my little soapbox speech on that one. Um, and then finally, this is something I really want to bring to my attention to the colleagues because, Dr. Brayburn, thank you for, you know, noting that this is our advisory committee. And so you guys, we own this. And I'm going to give you some statistics that I think we have to have an honest conversation here tonight because we own this advisory committee. As some of you may be aware, the, this particular advisory committee holds its meetings during the day. Almost all of our other advisory committees are held in the evening because we do have working parents. So of the 12 school board appointees, only four of 12 made five or more of the, the eight meetings. So less than half were even there, less than a third, actually. Um, we had three vacancies. Um, one of them was mine because he's a gentleman who does work during the day. And he just said they refused to en- entertain an evening meeting. And this was, I, it before your committee year. This was at the end of last year. I, it was when Carol Horn was still at the helm, I brought it up to Carol Horn and I was pretty much told, our committee likes to meet during the day and that's what it's, it's going to be. And the other thing that's interesting, not that I like to necessarily point out gender, but when you look at our, our committee, even with the vacancies, we had two men out of the eight who were able to be at these meetings on a consistent basis. And one of whom happens to have a flex schedule and can work from home. So I, I just think that this is our advisory committee. Now flip side statistics of the seven staff that, that participate and are appointed, um, to the committee, six out of the seven made five or more meetings. So four of 12, six of seven. So, I mean, I, I'm sensitive that I don't necessarily like that staff then have to work at night, but I've been a big advocate saying, we get staff's awesome, well-informed guidance through Dr. Braburn and his leadership team. These advisory committees are supposed to be our stakeholders and getting more information and holding them during the workday, it's, the data is showing it's not working. So I do hope that, you know, it must be nice for those who are long-term serving members and Ms. Corbett Sanders, I know you were one of them, if you have ability to work and or not be working and come in during the day, that's great, but I just think that my appointee dropped out because of it.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just, that's why we've got these vacancies. So I know you're flagging to comment on it, so I will defer back to you.
I mean, I just wanted to say really quickly, we certainly understand that and the plan is already in the works that it's going to be a nighttime meeting next year. So it's back to nighttime.
That is fabulous because I really, really liked my appointee a lot. And when he just told me there was no way he could make it work, I, really surprised me. And I wish I'd known that before I went into my little soapbox speech. But, you know, I guess at least I was able to highlight for all of you, if you happen to look at the attendance sheet, it looks that way because I think it was making difficult. And I want to thank the committee then for you all considering that and the merits of having an evening meeting because I, this is very important work. And I do hope that it means that we'll have a better attendance level from our school board appointees since part of the reason we have it is that we hope that our appointees can help advise us. So, but circling back to my opening remarks, great work by the committee, however small and however many we're able to make it. Just incredible information here. And what I really also appreciated was the intentionality of the recommendations about young scholars. A lot of us are so supportive of the program, but we've been, you know, concerned about how it can be really more robust, more successful for our students. And I think you all captured it so well in the work you did this year. So, well done.
Kaseya Kamara?
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank you guys as well. This is my first year working with this in this capacity. And as a parent who's had kids in school since 2001, certainly familiar with a lot of these issues. And so I want to, I'll point out one thing I think we're, has already been mentioned, but I certainly want to emphasize, and that is to making sure that we're following through because I have seen repeatedly, not just with my own kids, but other kids that I've had to advocate for, how many kids can be eliminated by virtue of the fact that they're not having those foundational classes, not because they're not capable, but simply because they were not seen. And so I would encourage, focus on that, which I think you already done, but also really looking at what level of support can happen to make sure that as these kids progress into middle school, into high school, that they are encouraged to continue achieving at these levels. Because I feel that kids, when they are isolated, they, you know, they kind of blow the water flows to the lowest level. It's not the best way to say that. But, you know, we do, they do need that support. Which brings me to my next point that I don't think was addressed in your recommendations, and that is the issue of cultural competency. I didn't see any recommendations that dealt with that. I can tell you from my personal experience, I am concerned about the degree to which our staff members are able to recognize children who are of color, especially when they are in schools where they are the very, very much the minority. And I looked at your list and I looked for the schools where I know that is the case and they're not, they are not in this program. And so I'm concerned that when you have children, when you have, what, 3% minorities in a particular school and we have not, I'm preaching to the choir, this is not your fault, I probably should be, probably should be banging on this one over here. No, I'm sorry. But I just think it's, it's very, I think that we lose so much by virtue of the fact that we, perhaps, I'm not sure how these schools are chosen. I was asking my colleague that reason, that was the reason I was asking that question. But I think that even more so, when you have a very small percentage of minorities in a school and you don't have a program like this, children who are capable become invisible. And I can tell you, I personally dealt with it. I have dealt with other children I've had to advocate for and it breaks my heart. Absolutely breaks my heart. And I can tell you guys have a heart for this as well, but this is just one of those forums where I can say that. And so I hope that this is something that we can, we can work on. I do have another comment, but did you want to say something?
Francisco, how many, or Sloan, how many schools have young, how many elementary schools? Seventy, 71 elementary schools?
Ninety-one.
It's 91 elementary. And how many have young scholars?
It's actually 84 elementary schools have young scholars. 91 principals have either get a full-time resource teacher in some way or another. But it's 84 elementary schools have young scholars, not all. And the way that it has become in the past, it's grown since 2000, every year, it's always been grassroots. It started with one principal and more and more add-on as the, as they hear about it and the great things that happen, they get on with their leadership, they can do great things. But that's something that we definitely talked about on the committee was about schools where it isn't happening, especially if there are any lingering Title I schools that still don't have it.
So there are a few schools where we still don't have it. I think that's one thing we've got to look at. The other is, as you know from the Equity Plan, we're going to have an Equity Liaison at every school next year. We need to shine a lens of equity in every school's data and have someone monitoring it through that lens. We're going to be doing training with those folks, I believe, over the summer, right, Francisco? And that's part of what we need to do. And remember with these Office of School Support teams that we'll have deployed to the regions, are we, were we interviewing today the Equity Specialists for each of those regions, Francisco?
Yes.
So we are going to gear up to put someone in the school as sort of a watchdog for Equity and someone in the region that can be deployed based on looking at school data to lean in and go, because some schools are doing this well. I mean, that's, that's the two sides of the coin here. It's been a program around for a long time. Some folks bought in early and they've done it well. We have some folks that have, who are late to this work and we've got to speed that up now. So I do think we're putting some things in place that are helping us do it. And I do think the cultural competence, you can have the resources even in the school and it doesn't automatically mean that the kids are going to get what you hope they get just because the resource is there. So it's the right queuing, it's the right suggesting, and this is another part of where we've got a nuance in Fairfax. Some of our parents, and I know this is a deeper conversation, but I'm saying sometimes our parents need to be willing to go, looking at every child by name and by need, oh my God, you're taking your 10th AP, you're taking all honors and you're struggling grade-wise, maybe take one less in the subject that you're not as passionate about. There are other kids that haven't taken any. They're young scholars, you're at middle school, you're not taking a single honors in anything?
Right.
You had cogat scores. We can, you need to be saying at minimum, right, when we're talking about capping from our conversation last night, we need to start talking about minimums for folks with a young scholar designee. The default needs to be, you need to be opting out of the honors, not this opt-in style. Well, we don't, so we've got to start changing some of the cultural practices that we have. If you're young scholars, you're going to have to tell the counselor why you're not going to be in honors. That's what, that's the piece that the families that are already motivated, those kids, those parents come in and demand, I want my kid in honors. I want my kid in AP. The young scholars piece is often that other. They're not, they've not been from a college-going culture. They need the queue. The default needs to be honors unless you have a reason not to.
I want to, I want to step in there because I can tell you this happened to my own kids, all right? And they have, they have two educated parents.
Sure have.
And it was just not, I'm telling you, their atmosphere, and I know that some of this has changed, but I can tell you that I had workbooks thrown at me, okay? And I can tell you that my kids were bored and I won't go on and make people upset and bring out their violins. So that's not what this is about.
No, no. It's not acceptable and we need to change it.
But I want you to know that it's not always about uneducated parents. It's not always about people who come in from a background where, you know, they don't know. It is an attitude. And that is the reason that I am saying that cultural competency is extremely important. I know that we have made advances, but I think sometimes we want to say that we have gotten farther than we have. And that is the reason that I'm making these comments.
I agree with that.
Okay. So the other issue that I want to make sure that we're focusing on because I think that the recommendations did not address this, or didn't, at least what I was able to read. I have to, everybody forgive me, I'm still on allergy cold medicine. But, you know, I do think there's also a similar difficulty in seeing twice-exceptional students, right? And so, you know, where is, where is the focus in making sure that we can see these kids? Because we're the ones, our communities are the ones that are losing out ultimately when we don't recognize the talent among us. And so I, I say that, not to you, because you guys did an amazing job, but I say it to us because these are the things that I think we truly have to work on. And I will step off my soapbox. Did you want to say something?
I mean, I just want to share some good news because I, everybody at the table needs to know, our office, this is what we talk about all the time. We're super passionate about all of, all of what you're talking about. We had a couple of years ago, all of the advanced academic resource teachers go through the three-day cohort for cultural competency with the hope and expectation that they would be leaders back in their school with leading those dialogues and with the AAP lens on them. So that is something that they, we continue to revisit at every opportunity with the resource teacher meetings. We have definitely a strong piece of cultural competency in our young scholars class. What I'll say about that is we've seen that be the most powerful when, when schools come and take that as a team. A single person is hard to make something happen with that, but when they come as a group, we've, they've gotten really excited together and then they go back and the action is more likely to happen. So that's been really powerful. And then the other last bit of good news that I'll share is with the twice-exceptional, we met for the first time this week with a project team. It's a combination of special education and the advanced academics team and several twice-exceptional parents. And we're working on a, a similar resource to the dyslexia handbook that will be online, that will be for both teachers and for families. So this is something that we 100% agree and want to make so much better.
Can I just do one thing? I know it's not, it's not my advisory, but just because I don't get to see you and I need to know you and need to know you all better. That, the team, there's a course you have? Is that what you said?
Yes, the Young Scholars Course.
So one of the things, after we hire these Equity Specialists, I want you to connect with them to offer the menus and with our Equity Liaison so that they, when they identify these issues at schools, what are some of the remedies that we can do now? You need to take a team to this course, it's offered here. Part of it is Fairfax, and I mean, I remember, it's just so much. You need a navigator to go, hey, here's the issue and we've got a solution for it. Sometimes we stumble on it or we hear it through someone else, a friend or another school who's a pyramid, instead of, hey, the data is telling us this and we've got the answer. So I think one of the things the Equity folks can start to do is put people with the right professional development needed and take teams at schools where they're still not where they need to be on this kind of work. And I think that's the kind of systems leadership. And it's cross-departmental, it's cross-regional. So, I don't know, Francisco, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, just to add to that, we recognize the importance of this connection. And that's why Kristen is actually sitting with me on all the interviews for the Equity Specialists. So she, we realize the need to have that voice of that and to really look for that lens. So Kristen is actually sitting with us on all of those. And so it's really important work. We also have been talking with her about the Equity Institute and how we're going to build that into it. And if you recall, also on the Equity Profile, the cover sheet, we're including advanced academic data on that for district. And the next year when we roll out for each school, it will be on each school's profile as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
So I'm glad the Equity Officer position and executive principal positions have come up. I'm trying to knit together an understanding of what it is that we're doing with Project Momentum, what it is we're doing with the Office of Equity, what it is we're doing with these executive principal positions, what it is we're doing with young scholars, what it is, I feel like we have all of these positions and different programs and everybody's coming at them from, I'm not, I don't even know, not even sure the different angles. And one of the concerns I heard, and I forget which of your slides had the, addressed the K through two, right, is particularly here and how this correlates necessarily to young scholars. Why is, why aren't these concerns, I guess, more universal? I guess I'm just looking at maybe a greater umbrella instead of the drilling down, you know, why, why is the focused 84 schools instead of 150 schools? And the big issue for me is if you don't catch it at K through two, forget it. You're just, you're done. I mean, honestly, you're done. And the big issue for me, whether it's students who would qualify for young scholars or as I look at, you know, the colleagues that are waiting to come up here, you know, special education students, fluency, 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 fluency. And, and there is this notion that rigor equals speed. Like you, you have to do what you're doing and you have to do it fast. And if you don't do it fast, you're not smart. And, you know, I don't know whether you came across that and I don't know what kind of data you looked at because we didn't really see the data that, it's the first thing I wrote, is we did a review of a large body of research. I was very happy to hear that. But I guess my question is, is, and I'm not exactly even sure, frankly, what my question is, but the concern that we're talking about 84 or 91, why aren't we talking about 150 or 155 or whatever the number is? Why, why aren't we talking about all of the schools? And why aren't we talking about all of the kids and all of the kids in delivering the services that all of the students need, where they need it, and then providing the supports like the Project Momentum Mark Greenfelder, where you're seeing at a classroom level, at a building level, at a pyramid level, where there is, you know, some pedagogical cohort progression over time for, for any student population. And I am very, very worried about that, that issue of fluency, regardless of what the student population is, because there are students that are culled, you know, and, you know, you kind of said, hey, look, you know, they're progressing great through elementary school and then all of a sudden they hit middle school and, you know, for whatever reason, they're not, they're not taking, they're not selecting, the parents aren't signing course sheets. But I do also think that it is the speed of work that is required and, and that somehow something is lost in translation. And this is a little bit of a carryover from our conversation last night, that more is better and more faster is even better yet. And that somehow something has been lost about what defines the ability of a student to perform at their highest level. And so it's not that I don't appreciate this program, but I see this as sort of a subset. And I don't really understand in the Venn diagram why, why we can't, on a scalability, we should be scaling this discussion across all students and all of our schools and giving, you know, whether it's professional development or targeted resources, to a breadth. Because I just, I think that we're maybe fishing for some fish and not to, to a breadth, because I, I just, I think that we're maybe fishing for some fish and not all, not, you know, there's, the holes in the net are too big and I'm worried about too many of the kids getting through. The other question I have is, and I think Dr. Presidio, you brought it, I don't know if you guys looked at, the data of the, the grades, the performance and the grades, did you look at that in correlation to SOL exams, performance on SOL exams or performance on AP or IB exams?
Our data was just about the grade, how many of the AP and IB courses that they took and the grades that they were achieving. So in the report, I think that was what was already mentioned though, so that's not exactly what you're asking for.
So Dr. Presidio, could you repeat the, that, what, what you were quoting as that data? Because you were doing the correlation as I understood it.
Yeah, and I was just looking and referencing some of the data that was in one of the many attachments to the report. So again, looking at that information and looking at the percentages of students that are young scholars that are taking advanced courses.
Eighty.
So 82% of young scholars are taking advanced courses and earning As or Bs while in high school. 86% of young scholars are taking AP or IB courses while in high school and 92% of young scholars are attending two or four-year colleges.
Okay, so, but my question is, and, you know, I'm a little bit surprised because Ms. McGlocklin and I usually pick up on this. What is the correlation between, and this, this goes to fidelity in grading practices? And that's another biggie that I'm not sure if you came across on the fidelity of delivery curriculum. Because you said, oh, well, there's some schools that say they have young scholars or they don't even have it at all. Well, that's a fidelity issue. But then the other issue is the fidelity of grading practices is, you know, to profess that, you know, X percent are getting As or Bs, what does that translate to in terms of their performance on SOLs or, or other standardized exams like AP or IB? Because then it translates, are we, is an A, an A, an A, is a B, a B, a B, you know, from teacher to teacher, from building to building? And then that sort of starts to elevate where the rigor is. Like is, is, is an A in one building for a young scholar student or a special education student? Or any honors student, is that translating across the division?
So a couple of things I, I would say, I mean, I think these are really good questions and, and we're happy to follow up on additional questions and look at additional data that the board is interested in looking at. You know, this obviously is a board advisory committee and staff tries to support the committee and not direct the work of the committee. So we didn't look at those particular questions, they're really good questions. One thing I would say, just in terms of the correlation between grades and test scores for AP and IB, we did include information at a general overall level in the Student Success Goal One report that we provided to the board. So that information is there. We didn't disaggregate that down and look at the young scholars correlation of grades and, and score data. So, you know, there's different things obviously that we could look at. I, I think you're asking good questions.
Thank you. I know you had that in the report because I think that I was the one who asked for it. I do think that that's important and I don't know, when you say you guys looked at a lot of research, I would like you to maybe talk about what kind of research you looked at and from where. But the, the correlation of how students are performing, you know, is that, is that associated with the professional development? Is that associated with which schools are funding their positions versus not? In terms of how vested they are versus it's a centrally supported position? These are sort of the nuances that I, I think the board has to consider as some of these are definitely, you know, resource, you know, requesting resources, others are not. But the ones that are not requesting additional resources, that's where I'm kind of like, is this not a good scalable model for, across all the schools? So if you could first talk a little bit about the research and then maybe Dr. Bray Brown.
So, you know, the amount of time that we had to meet over the course of the year really was learning a lot about what the young scholars model is, understanding the under-representation problem as a whole, getting to that granular of a level that could be next year or, you know, a continuing thing. We just didn't have the time to get to that this year. The body of research that the folks looked at was really to kind of see, are there practices going on around the country that we aren't considering that we really should be? And so Appendix Four in what was included, these were, you know, university articles, reports that were written by consulting groups. It was a mixture of a lot of different references, but the full bibliography of that was listed as Appendix Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Well, I was hoping that Dr. Bray Brown might talk about the scalability and considering not just the subset but the greater.
Yeah, the scalability of young scholars. I stepped out, so.
Not, not necessarily scalability of young scholars, but the scalability of concepts here of the, the supports, you know, to all students. And that we're doing this in Project Momentum where we're directing resources and not necessarily to.
Yep. I think I know where you're going. The, something else that's, what, what was one of your other recommendations? Can you go back one, two? Go back maybe four, let me see. Can you go the other way? Could have five. What was three again? I'm sorry, it's late. Okay. If, if we take our pacing guides, the new pacing guides we've done, and we teach those with fidelity, one day we're not going to need young scholars, I think, because our kids are all going to get the curriculum-rich instruction they need. I think I shared this at a work session several months ago. The best principals in elementary school already do this. They give the kids the good stuff, right? We've had a mindset, we need to identify a few and you'll get the, you'll get the special sauce. We need to be giving everybody the high-quality, tier-one instruction. And, and, and that's, that's, that's going to be where, well, I think you're going, which is why do we need these special programs if we can get the, the, the right first core instruction, rigorous, deep, rich? And there's been a little bit of a philosophy thing, I would say too, that's gone on in education. Do it, the kids need the basics, you know, do they got, until they have basic fluency down, can they think deep thoughts? Can they pursue project-based learning? I mean, you don't have to wait to get every foundational skill to dive into higher-level thinking. You guys probably can say it better than I can, but that, that's kind of the, so we can't just keep drilling on one little routine thing when we need to let kids, and sometimes it's this other stuff that's going to let them break out and care more about these foundational skills. So bottom line, the more we make universal, the high-quality curriculum to every kid, the less of the need I think we're going to see for programs like this. But we're not there yet. I am excited to tell you, as I talk to teachers, they, the work that Sloan and Francisco Shop has done developing it, teachers are on fire for this. They love it, it's great. I mean, it's new, they're having to teach to it and learn more, but it's making their classrooms come alive. I've told you all before, remember? I've been in science elementary, your classrooms now, oh my God, the labs are high school-like labs. Before it was worksheet stuff. Kids, this stuff is another level. We've just got to start teaching it with fidelity in all of our schools and I think we're going to see a bigger move.
The only thing I would ask is, is that as we move forward, and I, I know we're not supposed to do next steps, but I'm sort of just putting it out there, the longitudinal data of students, you know, it's sad to me that students who are performing well in elementary school, you know, fall off at middle school. And it, to me though, this isn't about young scholars, this is about raising the bar for all the students. And, and I do think that those expectations change when we go from learning to read to reading to learn. And, and that's when, you know, potential educational weaknesses start to get, you know, revealed. And then the drill and kill and the massive amounts of assessments and the, the fluency issues leave behind students that are potentially capable of very high-level work, but they're just deemed to, well, you know, you can't keep up. And the question is, is the keeping up part the part that we want to maintain? That's an ethos that's on our part that is the keeping up, so.
Mr. Moon and then Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair, being mindful of the fact that we are 20 minutes behind once again, that I'm going to be brief. Just one comment and maybe question while two. The comment that I want to make is something that Mrs. McGlocklin has already, already addressed, which was, I'm, I'm glad that the committee is looking at possibility of switching back to evening meetings because I know that I lost my, my appointee about a year ago because he cannot do during the day. Luckily, I found somebody who was willing to do during the day with a more flexible work schedule. I don't know whether if the, you know, meeting goes back to evening hours, whether I'm going to lose that appointee. But be that as it may, you know, between, you know, daytime and evening hours, I personally prefer evening so that more people could consider serving a, an advisory committee. Question about those 91 AART teachers. I want to see, you know, 13 from funded by centrally and I, I'm assuming the 78 was either locally, maybe trading some positions or please.
Yes, it's either trading like an IA position or an office staff position or Title I.
So you missed, I was going to go there because I think one of the recommendations you were mentioning was, if you cannot give all elementary schools one full-time AART, you know, consider giving, starting with a Title I. I'll tell you what, how many Title I, 40, 48, 40, how many Title I schools are there in Fairfax? There used, it used to be 40-something. I'm trying, if you don't have an exact number, that's okay. Okay, so it's, it's out of those 91, out of those 91 with AART teachers, how many are Title I schools?
I'm counting eight, that's a, wait no.
Eight.
Nine, no, 10, 10 on a quick count.
So 10 out of 91. And so, okay, for, okay, 10 Title I school among the other 81, are they sort of like evenly spread out throughout the county in terms of, let's say, the geographically or demographically, socio-economically? Or do you see more of, hmm, upper middle-class schools having more AART teach, teachers?
I, I would want to go back and map that out. I, I think it's pretty evenly spread, but I would really want to double check.
Okay, if you could double check and maybe, you know, send us that information later on, I would appreciate it. One quick question about the parent liaison, I did ask similar question yesterday because this came up as, as a point of discussion yesterday too. Roto-parent liaison, I think if I, you know, hold this correctly, that maybe you might want to have, you know, parent liaison to be able to reach out to a certain, you know, community to be able to explain the young scholars program so that more of the students get the benefit of this. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
That is part of that recommendation, that is part of Recommendation Five. Part of that would involve utilizing parent liaisons in creative ways. So not just necessarily specifically young scholars, but education workshops in the community or at the school, in times and locations, languages and formats that non-native English-speaking parents can access.
I'm not necessarily, yeah, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with that approach, but at the same time, the concern that I expressed yesterday, which I am going to repeat is, you know, you look at the parent liaison, they are just playing the roles of many different people, whether, whether it is expectation of the school system or should that be the expectation of a school system for these parent liaisons to be able to perform all these different roles? Being counselors, you know, social workers, just friends, you know, translators, it's just information conveyors, I don't know where this ends. We are looking for like a superhuman beings to serve in this role. Whether is that fair, do you think that they can be adequately trained to be able to play all those roles?
So I look at them as a connector really too, because when I was a resource teacher in a school, yeah, it was just them having the relationship with the ART to know, this is, I'm going to go to this person to get the answer. And oftentimes as a resource teacher, I would sit down with the liaison and the parent and we would fill out referral forms together. So they would have their expertise and I would have my expertise and we would do it as a group.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you, and I, I want to thank you for an excellent report and for all the work you've done this year. Mr. Moon has made many of the points that I was planning to make. So I will, I guess, follow up with that and say, we've got 91 principals telling us that these positions are so important that they're willing to use other funding, including Title I funding. And so I do think we need to address that and perhaps the, the first thing to do would be to cost out what it would take to add the half a position in all of our Title I schools. And I think it's what, 42? Is it Dr. Presidio, our Title I schools, is it something around that?
Approximately, yeah.
It's, it's 40-something and so.
We have 48 currently and next year there'll be 46.
46 next year, I see, okay. And so if, if we've only got a handful that, and if they're having to use Title I funding, I certainly would prefer to see that come from, from central office. They're telling us that that's important. So I would love to see that costed out in addition to costing out, doing it for, for, for all schools because that might be a, a good start. I will look forward to what the Equity position is, is how that position will help us move all of this forward. Because I, I have to say, I, I still have a, a deep frustration. Every one of my schools has young scholars, you know, every one of my elementary schools and yet very, very, very few students from my district get into TJ and I realize that's only one marker, but it is just a handful. And so I'm, I continue to be frustrated with where we are that we, we haven't been able to break through on that barrier. Something's happening in other schools that's, that's not happening in some of our schools. So I think as a matter of Equity, we really have to address that, you know, why, why are we having so many from one area and, and not from others? So thank you for your work and, oh, back to, I will make one point about the parent liaisons. Yes, this is the second night in a row that we've heard about more things that our, our wonderful parent liaisons can do and I, I have an absolute faith in them and as, as some of you know, I'd love to increase the hours of our parent liaisons because certainly they do a stellar job. And, and Mr. Moon, if, if you'd like to see somebody who, who provides all of those roles, go over to Bailey's Elementary School and see Maria Demarest. Yeah, she's a psychologist, she's a mother, she's a grandmother, she's a translator and everything else you could want, but she's been doing it for over 20 years. So yes, she, she, some of them do fulfill all of those roles.
Hey, I get to be the last one. Thank you. I very much, very interested in the list in Appendix Two that shows all the schools with Young Scholars Program. And I, actually it's a fascinating list because it actually has showed some schools that are highly diverse, also highly successful. I was going to say McNair Elementary, which actually is the biggest feeder now into Thomas Jefferson. And I was even in my district, my very neediest school, which is Hutchison, tremendous principal. Oh, he's doing a great job and he has young scholars in Haycock, which is highly, highly successful and they also have young scholars. So I am seeing a sort of wide swath, which is, which is I think what we're looking for, is being able to use this approach across all schools to make sure that, that again, the, the pedagogy is there for everybody. So as I look at at least the schools that I recognize and I understand, I am seeing a pretty. a pretty wide swath. So this is, this is encouraging, and certainly we'd want to make sure that, that all the Title One schools have the programs. I see a lot of Title One schools in this list as well. Not all of my Title One schools, but the ones that I would expect to see there. So I think that is very interesting. 20 years ago, when we first invented Young Scholars, its main goal was to get kids into Thomas Jefferson. But I am pleased that we've expanded it, because Young Scholars really should be about pedagogy and scaffolding and the best opportunities for teaching learning for all kids. And the goal is certainly more than getting into one school. It is achieving at the highest level that a child is capable of, no matter where he or she goes. So, and I, I really appreciate that, part of the challenge that you were saying, that in middle school, if the kids don't continue, particularly in math, then those opportunities, because math does build on itself, you have other, other areas where you can kind of fill in as you go, but math does have various foundational levels and you, and the, it's not easy to make up for gaps. And I know that that is one of the concerns when we talk about equity of opportunity, that opportunity in math is, is very important, because it's, if we miss that, high school is too late. So thank you very much, and we appreciate your work and your recommendations, and we will certainly take into consideration your recommendations. So thank you all very much. Thanks.
Okay, we'll take about two minutes and then we'll go to our next report.